Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader, City of Vader City Council. The date is Friday, August 14th and the time is 7:34 a.m. Roll call. Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Donna Rogers.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
All right, we have everyone here. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Parsons, what do you do today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. I wanted to make an announcement. The Planning Committee is having their next meeting as well as a public hearing on a variance request next week, August 20th at 6 o'clock. I did complete the annual employee reviews as well as the end of probationary period for Diane and Stephanie and I am pleased to announce that everyone is an amazing employee, which we already knew, and that Diane and Stephanie are both now regular full-time and regular part-time employees. Also, we did change John Flatt's job description. It comes with a new title and job description, obviously. Public Works and Utilities Lead. This new title and job description better describes the responsibilities of this position. There were a lot of things we were asking John to do that weren't in his job description. And so we wanted to make that clear.
So did we give him a raise?
They did, yeah, they did. Stephanie got a small raise because in her job description originally she wasn't really working on building permits and so she's doing a lot more than what she was before. John and Bill got raises, just the annual that they would normally expect. We did submit a TIB grant this week to get about roughly about a mile worth of chip seal in town and the park board submitted the second half of their RCO grant for the Warden Park Council reports.
I don't exactly have a report, but I would like to set aside voting on these ordinances 2020-08, 2020-09, and 2020-10. Have not had a chance to go through those and really look at them. And what I did get to look at, I had some real questions about. I don't think these should be passed today by the council until we've all had a chance to go through these and really check them over.
Okay, understood. Yeah, definitely during that time. I actually kind of expected that, just that they are really large and you guys finally had less than 24 hours to take a look at them. So definitely we could talk about it when we get down there and if we want to delay, it's, they're not urgent.
Okay, good.
Yep. Any other council reports?
For me, I want to have us all start thinking about bringing prayer back to our meetings. There's way too much stuff going on in this world that has been taken away or is going on because of the lack of prayer in our country and I think we need to bring it back into our city council meetings.
May I ask who's speaking since they're not logged on the computer?
That was my, I'm Mike Parsons.
City, City Council member.
Sorry, I just can't see you, thank you.
And also, I agree with you, Donna.
Well, thank you.
You were sitting down, right?
Yes, I am. I wanted to get it up for that one.
All right, more council reports?
I just wanted to say that I also agree with Donna. I would like some more time to kind of read over the ordinances before we decide to pass anything.
Absolutely. Yeah, when we get down there, we'll, we'll consider them discussion items. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, moving on. Agenda approval. Please note, we have two agendas today.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city agenda for 8/14/2020 as written and the public hearing from 8/14/2020 as well.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the city council meeting for August 14th, 2020, and the public hearing agenda for August 14th, 2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval. Do we have a motion from the council to approve the minutes from 7:24?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting on 7:24, 2020 as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the city council meeting minutes from July 24th, 2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of July 2020, $12,573.43 for the total month of July 2020, $34,211.80 and the 1st of August 2020 for $29,330.67.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. The monthly sheriff's report. Seeing as I have his laptop, we'll see if he knows his stuff.
Hello, it's Kevin Engelbertson with the Lewis County Sheriff's Office, giving you the report for July 2020. Looks like we had about 400 citizen contacts, five calls on shift, 18 calls that we responded to that we were not scheduled on shifts, so a total of 23 calls for service. We had 10 traffic stops, we had one traffic infraction, one misdemeanor arrest, and one felony arrest for assault in the first degree, which was a call we responded to off-shift. I don't really have a lot to report other than the homeless person down on, I think it's A Street, is no longer there, so, and we're also looking at the end of F Street. I know Diane and the mayor has been in some of the emails regarding the subject of the end of F Street and some stuff he has on possibly city property that we're trying to, trying to figure out, so. Any questions by the council or?
I, I have a question. I don't know if you know this or not, but many years ago I heard this thing about a right-of-way had been walking down this cul-de-sac and going down through an empty lot to a grocery store and they'd been doing it for years and years and years. And so the people on the cul-de-sac decided they were going to close that off. Well, these homeless people somehow managed to get an attorney and they won the right because they had been using that right-of-way for many, many years, but decided they couldn't close it off. But I'm wondering if that could be the same case for F Street because that has always been open and a throughfare for everybody to go down, even though it was a private road. And you, the sign up here says no trespassing and you can't stop ingress and egress even on a private road. So I'm just curious about that, if anybody knows anything about that.
You're talking about F Street itself?
Yeah, F Street, well, that lady blocked it off down there at the, where Park Road is, Park and F.
Correct.
And I'm just, yeah, and there's been, I guess, quite a battle going on down there over it. And I know that Jeff, our garbage man, is now happy to go down there and figure out some way to turn around and come back out because he can't get through there now. So I'm curious about fire and ambulance and how that's working down there.
Yeah, that has definitely come up in conversation. And maybe I got some wrong information months and months ago when that fence was put in, but I was told that she contacted the city and the city approved the fence or gate or whatever it was. I don't know if approves the right word, but she contacted someone who basically said, hey, this is a private road, you can, it's your property, you can put a gate on it if you want. So, yeah, legally for us, that's kind of a, it's kind of a hard one because it, it is a private road. I know what you mean about the ambulances and fire trucks because you definitely don't want to block that off, so that definitely has, has come up in discussion.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, thanks Sergeant. All right, moving on to the first item of city business. The public hearing for the six-month moratorium of certain development permits in the commercial historic district. Public hearing, public hearing to hear comment on the ordinance 2020-06 imposing a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance of certain development permits for all properties located on A Street between Sixth and Seventh Street, the historic commercial district. We need council member to make a motion to open the public hearing for X amount of time, whatever you choose, and then we'll have a second, open it, and then close it after public testimony.
I have a citizen trying to get onto the meeting and she's saying that it's not working. Is there a different number?
I don't know. There are nine people that were able to get on. If they're on the website, make sure they use the links on the right-hand side that say city council, not the planning committee site. Do a motion by council to?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for 10 minutes or less or more, depending on what's needed.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to open the public hearing on the moratorium for 10 minutes or as needed. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I open this public hearing at 7:48 a.m. Let the testimony begin. I believe we have one person, Judy Costello.
Judy Costello, 709 A Street. I have a couple of questions for you first. I feel that as a property owner on this block that we're referring to, I should have been notified in writing by city stating that you were actually going to do a moratorium. The other thing is, is I'd like to know what is the progress of this moratorium we have on it right now? And at what extent is the permitting process? Is it just for actual building of new buildings or is it for repair, maintenance, et cetera?
Okay, I can talk about those after the public hearing if you like. Anyone else interested in offering public testimony on this issue that's online?
I would like to bring up one issue that I've seen run through several issues going on about actual public notification.
Can you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Dr. Margot McHyver, 906 10th Street.
Thank you.
And I would like to, this is a little offshoot, but just mention, there should be some sort of public outreach for these things that affect the citizenry. You know, we do have lives and we have concerns and this feels kind of underhanded and backdoor, so I would like some sort of public outreach to be included in these measures. Thank you.
Any other public, public comments on this? Several people online, I don't recognize their names.
My name is Ron Schlow. I live at 921 Ninth Street. I'm just curious, what is the, what is the city's, oh shoot, contact with the citizens on these issues? On, on the moratorium, on the sewer system rules, on the sewer rates? How are you going to contact the citizens that this affects? I heard about these ordinances, fourth party. I didn't hear from the city about this. I feel the city should have to contact the people that this affects and, and just putting a posting out on the city hall is not adequate.
This public hearing is about the A Street moratorium, it's not about the ordinances that are listed further down in city business. Any other comment on the A Street moratorium?
Are the comments open to just the public or can the council comment if the public
Council will have a moment, will have time after the public hearing closes to make comments, absolutely.
On the moratorium?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
We have another comment from Judy Costello.
I think that Cindy Radcliffe had a comment, but I think she is having difficulty logging in unfortunately because she's a property owner down there also.
That's true.
So I just kind of wanted to.
I'm putting you on speakerphone. We're in the middle of the public hearing and Judy thinks you have a comment. You're on speakerphone now.
Is this regarding A Street?
Yes.
I was just wondering, I haven't received any notice on what they're doing with the moratorium and I was wondering if they were going to notify property owners.
All right, I'll answer these questions afterwards. That was Cindy Radcliffe. Anyone else? All right, I'll ask again. Is there any other public testimony on the A Street moratorium? All right, hearing none. I close this public hearing at 7:53 a.m. So the council, I don't have my notes here. The council has three options on this at this, at this moment. Council can do nothing and it stays in place for the remainder of the six months or until we, excuse me, draft an ordinance that will end it because we started the moratorium with an ordinance, so we have to have an ordinance to end the moratorium early if we so choose. And then the third thing that we can do is adopt more findings of fact to the current ordinance if we had any new information to add to it, which I do not have anything new information to add to it at the moment. Those are the council's options. Do nothing, instruct to have an ordinance made to end the moratorium, or adopt more findings of fact. I'm going to open this to discussion with the city council now. I know Donna, you had some questions?
Well, I do. What is the status of the people who are wanting to build there? I, I don't kind of get what's going on here. What are we holding up for? And like I say, I don't know what their intentions are because this is, the ordinance and the, oh, the plan for the city that the city did adopt many years ago to keep that a historical look on the block between Seventh and Sixth. So what are the intentions of the builder there? What are we going to hold him to? Or, because I have concerns about them wanting to change that historical look there and I don't want to see that happen.
And that's why we put the moratorium in, so that we could get it more defined, is my understanding.
Right, so the purpose of the moratorium that, that the council voted on is, was and was to give the planning committee and then the council after that time to adopt a proper definition of what a historical look is. If you look through our development regulations, it's quite seriously just one sentence that says to maintain the historical look of Vader. When city hall went to issue or approve a building permit from someone that was interested in building there, what does that mean? What is the criteria that we're going to hold them to, right? Legally, we need to have a more developed definition of what that means. And so years ago, when the, when the city adopted this, I guess it just wasn't thought out or something, I'm not sure exactly what the thinking was. I'm sure everyone at the time had a vision of what that meant, but legally, we could be challenged on what that means, right? I mean, we could, we can't just, if someone applies for building permit and says, well, here I go, this is, this is what I think is historical, you know, if we deny it, based on what grounds? Just because we don't think it is, right? We need to have a clear definition. And so the planning committee is working on that. Like I said, the beginning of the meeting next week is their planning committee meeting and hopefully they'll have some, something clear to offer to city council to, to approve after that. So, some of the other questions? What is the, oh, go ahead.
The eighties are historical now.
They are.
So.
Yeah, so like I said, it's, we didn't have any, any way of properly defining what that meant and approving or denying the building permit, right? We didn't have a definition, so we needed to have a definition.
Well, I was wondering, because in that deal, gosh, I can't think of the name of it right now, that they got a grant for, that Dave Holland put in, it's quite clear in there what the requirements were and the city did adopt that. Maybe it wasn't made into an ordinance, but maybe that's what should be done because it's pretty clear in there how the buildings are supposed to look.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Shai.
Mr. Gross.
Hi there, how are you today?
Good.
I just wanted to comment on Donna's statement. Donna, from what we've gathered, the, it just, the thing that's verbalized in there is just that it has to have a facade made of wood.
Right.
That is of historic nature and that's, that's kind of vague because again, it's a wood facade, okay, so it's something that, that fronts the building that's made of wood, but again, it's the historic look that is, is the vague portion of that, in our opinion. So that's what we are working on, on getting more specific and not as, as just a vague statement that it just needs to be of historic nature. It's going to be more defined as Mayor Shai was just describing.
Okay, I, I'm just concerned that with pressure from developers, we might lose that part of, of it. So, and I would like to see a, check that historical look, whatever we need to define that to be, but.
From my, from my understanding, the, the purchaser of the lots on the same side as the post office is workable to meet what it is that we want to have there because he's apparently, I haven't seen anything, I just heard secondhand that he's come up with some, some verbal ideas that would kind of fit. And again, it's just a matter of us getting that specific definition in writing so that that way everybody can be on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
And let me, let me say one more thing. Everybody on the planning committee and everybody that has presented a comment regarding this is all on the same page. We all want to keep it historical, we all don't want changes to come in and have it be a single-family residence, you know, type of a home in that area. So just know that, that we are all on that same page to keep that historic look in that
Okay. Any other council discussion? Did we, did we cover all the questions that folks had?
Could you please respond to notification for Cindy and I?
Right, so legally, we didn't need to notify before or after that we were going to pass this.
Really? Did you hear me? I'm outburst here.
I'm just saying what was.
Because you're affecting our property down there, I mean, my sale, real estate, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff goes on.
Right, well, we, I mean, it was post, we did the legal notification, which is the posting in the newspaper, like all of our ordinances. So it was in the newspaper after the council approved it.
I would like to state, Judy Costello, I'm disappointed, there's only about eight of us. It would have been nice to have had a letter from the city stating the moratorium, et cetera, and again, on the upcoming meeting also. I think we need a letter for the 20th. Isn't that again, something about this?
It's just a planning committee discussion, it's not an official hearing or anything like that.
Okay, but now I think that the people, like Dr. Margot, you know, is saying that, you know, and the other gentleman, the Ron gentleman, I think, said, we would like to know other than a posting out here and we don't all read that paper, Samantha. Thank you, Joe.
It's also on, and it's also on the, the city website as well. So it's on, it's, go ahead.
This is Dr. Margot McHyver, you know, I'm like.
I'm sorry, hold on. Dr. Margot and Cindy, we have two people talking at once. I'm going to start with Dr., I only see Margot on here, I'm sorry, I don't have your last name. McHyver?
McHyver, I would like to reiterate the point about public outreach in such a small community and if, if the city could do a little more diligence in reaching out to the people that these, that these ordinances affect their lives, I would be really grateful, especially during this pandemic. And if you guys don't believe that, I am a healthcare professional and we are in dire straits, so we need some sort of alternative communication. Please and thank.
And like I said, I said before, every ordinance is legally required to be posted in the newspaper, which we do, our, the legal newspaper that the city uses is the, the Town Crier, the Lewis, Lewis County News, and so all of our ordinances are posted in there, just like Winlock's ordinances are posted in there. And we also put everything on our website, the entire log of ordinances are there as well. And usually the audio of these meetings, our city council meetings are also uploaded to YouTube and the links for that are on. to YouTube, and the links for that are on the city webpage as well. So there are many ways that the public can get notified of all of these changes.
This is Dr. Margot McIver. Posting a notice is not notification of the public. You guys need to do more outreach, in such a small community, we depend on you to help us with these kind of things.
Okay, understood. Ms. Radcliffe, you had some comments?
Well, you may have followed the letter of the law, Joe, by just posting it in the town crier. I haven't read the town crier, I don't know, months and months and months, I don't keep up with what the city council is doing. So I, other than just hearing word of mouth, I wouldn't have even known. And the people that own next to me don't even live in town, they don't even live in the county. So how would they have known to even go to the city of Vader? Are they supposed to just check every couple of weeks? You want, you're putting the due diligence on them when there's only eight people that own down there, and it would have been eight stamps. And that doesn't seem like going too far out of the way in order to make sure that the people who this affects are duly notified that you guys are going to make a change, or you're possibly going to make a change to something that they might be interested in. It's eight stamps, what's a stamp, sixty cents now?
Okay, understood. Any other comments or questions that weren't answered? We're still in the city business portion of this for council discussion, does council have any other discussion or direction on this at the moment?
I think, for me, I think we should wait till after the planning committee to make any kind of decisions on this, so my decision is to wait.
Okay. Any other council discussion? All right, hearing none. Moving on to item two of the city business, actually, as was mentioned earlier in the council reports, items two, three, and four, the sewer system rules and regulations, the sewer rate schedule, and the side sewers, all these ordinances are, are in the same nature. They are taking our old regulations, turning them into a code that fits into our current, into our new system, and also scrubbing them and making them up to date with all the legal standards and protections that we need. For the folks that, hopefully you all read the, the agenda bill that our attorney wrote on this, that described this in detail, the importance of this. If I can get my notes here, I can read some of it to you that don't have it in front of you.
Excuse me, Joe.
Yes.
Are we going to adjourn the public hearing and come to a conclusion to whether to keep the moratorium or not?
I did conclude the public hearing at 7:53, and we had council discussion on that afterwards, and so the public hearing was closed, and we moved on to the next item of business.
But are we going to keep the moratorium? Or not?
Yes, the council didn't take any action on the, on it, and so, and that's why I asked if there were any more comments on it before I moved on.
Well, I thought we were going to vote whether to keep the moratorium or the-
It doesn't require a vote.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. So let me just read these, this introduction paragraph in that agenda bill about those sewer ordinances and where they came from. Since the city has been in the process of updating its sewer regulations for several years, including adopting a side sewer ordinance in 2014 and adopting urban design standards, the city attorney drafted comprehensive sewer code revisions back in 2018, but due to pending codification and other issues, they were never brought forward. Earlier this year, the city completed codification of its ordinances. Since the sewer regulations are technical in nature, now that the codification is complete, it makes sense to bring forward the rest of the amendments to make the sewer code both well-organized and complete. In addition, the Department of Ecology grant agreements require the city to have a sewer code that complies with certain standards. This update meets those requirements. So that gives you all some background of where this came from. It was work, it was in the works for quite a while, and just kind of got dropped a couple of years ago. And so with the pending ecology grants, we brought these forward again to finally complete them and then get them fit, fitted into our, into our city code that's now online for everyone. So once again, it's not a whole lot of change, it's just restructuring and adding in some protections and things like that to our sewer system that the ecology requires for the grant. Once again, I understand that they're huge, I mean, I think there's seventy pages worth of, worth of document there between the three of them. And so I understand that if you guys want more time to read through those, I'm sure they're not, they're not a one sitting kind of thing, they're not really engaging.
To make you go to sleep really fast.
Yeah, so, anyway, if there's discussion right now on these items of business, we can certainly have it, otherwise, we can move on.
Move on.
Mayor Shay, Ron Schlaugh again, 921 Ninth Street. The question that came to mind is that when I bought my property, I was told that I was grandfathered in with my septic, and I would not have to hook up the city sewer. That's what I was told when we went through the city, that, that I was grandfathered in, I would not have to hook up the city sewer. I'm not opposed to hooking up the city sewer, I understand the infrastructure, I understand how, how it works. I just want to have adequate due diligence of the city to notify me of saying, this is when it's going to happen. I don't want to have to hear about it, third or fourth party. I want the city to be responsible to me as a landowner and a property owner within the city of Vader, and my wife and I work very hard to keep our property up, and we, we work very hard to make sure that it's maintained. We have pride of ownership. If the city is not going to have pride of ownership of what they're doing within this county, maybe we don't need to be a part of the city anymore. And that's how I feel.
Mr. Schlaugh, I, I, it sounds like you're talking about a particular issue that impacts you.
No.
I, I, I'm not familiar with the issue that you're discussing.
I'm talking about the sewer system and about how, you know, it seems to me that the, the, these ordinances just sprung up. We didn't receive anything about this, no notification, and that's all I'm saying. I would like adequate notification from the city before there's going to be a vote on this.
Well, I can say that these three ordinances are pretty much just restructuring what already exists. We're not imposing anything new that should substantially impact you at all.
Okay, so...
You seem like you're very concerned about them, I'm not sure that they'll really have any impact on you at all.
Okay, I was told that this was a mandate, and I, and I apologize for that. That is the lack of communication, that this was going to be mandated and forced upon us, and that there, if we didn't do this, there would be liens and fines.
No, there's, there's nothing about that, I don't know where you heard that.
There is.
There is.
There is that in there.
It's in-
Oh, this is, this is-
This is Mike Parsons. So you said your name was Ron, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ron. Ron, so I'm actually in the same boat you are. I don't have a sewer, and when I moved into town, they told me that it was grandfathered in. And on the, on one of them, one of the documents, or a couple of the documents, it says that if you are within now a hundred and fifty feet, I was told previous that it was five hundred feet, but if you're within a hundred and fifty feet of a main sewer line, you have six months to hook up to the sewer, which, especially at this timeframe, and that's why I'm so, yeah, we need to read over this more, because at this timeframe, with everybody being, some people being out of work, a $4,000 hookup fee, all of a sudden, is, is a bad idea. So, so that's what he's referring to, is the sewer, all of a sudden now we're going to have to hook up to it. And I think most of us, I know I was, Ron just said he was, told that we were grandfathered in, and the only time that I needed to hook up to it, it was if I was to build a new house. And they said, well, if you, if you're going to build a new house, you're going to have to hook up to the sewer system if it's within five hundred feet of you. Now it's within the hundred and fifty feet, and it's of the property line also, which there's some people that are a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet from their property line that the sewer is next to, and so you're talking about a $4,000 hookup, and then, I haven't even priced it, but two hundred feet of sewer pipe to get to your house, and not to mention, more than likely, there's going to be permit fees to get that done, and the list goes on. And so, just to let you know, Ron, we're on the same page, and that's why we're, that's why I'm postponing this, because it was like, hold on.
Okay, well, that's, that's great, so there's either, there's either some, something we're missing in there that, 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 that we're not seeing, that grandfathered you in for existing sewers, or there is a mistake in there. I can say thank you to the city council members for being very thorough in your research. And if you have any questions or anything like that, continue to read through over the next couple of weeks before our next council meeting. Highlight anything, and then, and let City Hall know what your questions are, so we can get answers to them leading up to the next city council meeting, so that, and we can, so we can get, get them to our engineer and, and see what he has to say about them. Obviously, that is not the intent to force anyone on a sewer system to, or, excuse me, on a septic, to connect to our sewer, to our, to our sewer system. And so if that is a problem, we'll fix it, there's a chance that there is something in there that talks about it in the other many pages. We have a question?
May I make a comment?
Oh, we have a comment from Donna Rogers.
I had a chance to get on MRSC yesterday, but these, these things that you're talking about in here, these are going to be law, these are ordinances. So I am also in the same boat, I also am on septic. And one of the things that I picked off MRSC, nobody has really researched this, this is hardcore law, you're going to do this, and, and then also, there's this deal of hiring a engineer to actually come, that's an extra cost to put in your side sewer. So that's a few thousand dollars.
That's already a city ordinance, by the way.
Yeah, these are ordinances.
Yeah, that, that one, what you describe already is, people already have to do that.
Yes, I know, but a lot of us on Tenth Street up here, through no fault of our own, are all on septic systems, and that's an added expense to us. Anyway, I did find this one thing from MRSC, it says, many cities, towns, and counties have an ordinance or resolution requiring connection to a public sewer system upon the failure of your septic system. So, and I don't see anything in work that requires any sort of- Okay, so-
Yeah, that definitely should be in there if it's not in there already.
Well, the connection you have required in here is all property owners abutting a road, street, and/or alley wherein sewage systems are available shall be compelled to connect their sewer to such system within six months after whatever, I'm not going to turn the page and read on, but this is kind of-
Turn the page and read on, I'm curious to know what that next section is, Donna. Six months from what?
All right.
All right. Says, said sewer systems are available within six months. In addition to other penalties as may be provided, anyone who neglects or refuses to so connect with such system shall be charged an amount equal to the charge that would be made for the sewer service of the property was connected to such system. And further, in addition to the foregoing charges, the city shall charge for each connection with the sewer system made by the city, the actual cost of all labor and materials, therefore, plus fifteen percent. And that's, if you don't hook up to it, you're still going to get charged for the whole sewer system as if we're hooked up to it. I really don't like that part right there.
Okay, well, once again, I'd appreciate if all the city council members could, you all have the documents, they're on the website, they're for everyone to get to, as well as emailed to you. Please go through and send the sections of concern to City Hall, so that we can get these things answered for you, or modified in a, in a way that better represents the city. So, like I said earlier at the beginning of this meeting, I had, I was pretty sure that everyone wanted more time on these, and I'm, I'm grateful that everyone's taken their time on these.
So Mayor Shay?
Yes, Mr. Schlaugh.
If, if there, there should be something, if we want something in this about being grandfathered in, whereas if we have, I understand, if there is a septic failure in my system, that I be required to hook up to city sewer, I understand that. But should, should, do I need to put something in writing saying, I want, since I bought an established working septic system, I should be grandfathered in, do I need to put that in writing?
Mr. Schlaugh, you do not, you do not need to put that in writing. I can tell you that this, that this city council will not be passing these ordinances if it forces people that are currently on working septic systems to hook, to hook up to our sewer system.
Okay.
You know, I would like-
Go, go ahead, Donna, I'm done.
Oh, okay. Another thing, as I read on in the MRSC that I was reading you about failing systems, that reads on, as the Septic Installers Association argued that these regulations sometimes forced unfair financial burdens onto homeowners due to the cost of hooking up to sewer systems. And this is if it failed, this is an appeals process that the state, it's a new law, it came into effect, I'm not, oh, 2015, and it's ESB 5871. So they have managed to fix an appeal, deal for this, but you can, they can, the city can allow you to fix, either repair it or replace it after a hearing. So you're granted, people are granted to have a hearing because of the financial burden on it. So there are things that need to be, you know, researched a lot, and I know that the private citizens can't, you can get access to MRSC and look all of these things up, but I would like to see when something like this comes up, I don't know what a hardship it would be to, and I, and I have to say this, the public should take the responsibility of checking on the city website, and at the same time, the city should take the responsibility of putting these ordinances and things that are going to come up for things like that on the website for people to see. There's no other access that they have to these, and certainly don't know that they're coming up. So I think if, everybody takes a little bit of responsibility, and this kind of stuff is posted out there on our website all the time, where people can get on there, that's their responsibility to do that. But it's also the city's responsibility to make sure this, all of this information is available to the public. And that's the only way they can get it, is through the website, otherwise, they wouldn't know, period, you know, at all. I'm done.
Is there any other discussion on these items before we move on to item number five, council meeting date and time change?
This is Dr. Margot McIver again, 906 Tenth Street. I would like to reiterate the point about public involvement, especially- I would like to reiterate the point about public involvement, especially in something that can be as financially detrimental as these topics. If we're not included in these discussions, that are, they could be potentially $1,000 in fees and setting up. I actually researched the cost of this. I read through a 29-page, 29-page document about this from you guys last night. And honestly, that is like way too much for me to comprehend in one small term. Um, and I really think the public needs to be involved in this. We're talking about huge, huge financial hits for us, especially in the time of the pandemic, when we already live in an impoverished community, and the community where maybe people have lost their jobs or looking for work. This needs some extra time and consideration, and a little more help for the public, because going out and being forced or compelled to, uh, when you have a working septic system to actually hook up, I knew that this wouldn't happen, but that's what the wording is in the document right now. So I, I would like some sort of notification process of this going on. I mean, it took a lot of time for me to find, and honestly, I wouldn't have found it without some sort of heads up. So I am thoroughly outraged and disgusted and furious that this is going on behind our back. And I feel like this is underhanded, and you guys should know better. It's your job to help notify the public. Look, I'm a healthcare provider. I work to help protect and educate people, you know, going through the pandemic. I don't have time to sit and read through the website all the time, looking for things the way you guys are trying to screw us over. So I need public notification. Thank you.
I am sorry you feel that way. Um, there is nothing in these ordinances that was intended to change anything that a homeowner would have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, um, which is why the city council has chosen not to do anything on these issues right now and revise them so that they do fit the, um, the nature of the city. So, um, this was not an attempt by the mayor, or the council, or City Hall to pass anything behind anyone's back. Uh, we follow these, oh, and we just lost the meeting. All right, just a, a real quick check. Samantha Love, lady?
Here.
Donna Rogers?
Sorry about that. Here.
Nope, that's, it wasn't you. It was, it was technology. Um, Jason Daly is still present, as well as Randy Hall. Uh, Mike Parsons did have to excuse himself. He had, um, another meeting to attend to. All right, continuing on. Um, was there any other discussion on the sewer ordinances that were there? Or are we ready to move on?
Well, I wanna ask, um, is this, are we, um, as council members, charged with doing some research? We, now in the next mini, meetings, we will have a chance to, uh, specifically discuss all of this for the next few meetings, maybe?
We could. Um, if you do, um, go, as you go through it, please send E, um, City Hall your, uh, your questions or concerns or changes that you'd like. And perhaps we could have all of those, um, in the next draft of ordinances um, so that we wouldn't have to go through multiple council meetings for these to get done.
And, and, oh, Mr. Mayor, um, Ken, Ken Reller, talking 906 10th Street. I'm just curious, how did this become an ordinance proposal with apparently no discussion amongst the city council?
That, that's what this is. This is the, the discussion, this is the discussion about the ordinances. The council doesn't have to approve them if they don't, if they don't want them.
Well, yeah, but shouldn't the city council, like, propose the ordinance? And, and talk about it beforehand, before, there, there's an ordinance now put before them?
Correct.
And why, why didn't they have any input into what goes into the ordinance?
This is their opportunity to give input into the ordinance. Uh, this, the City Hall, the city staff, myself, city staff, or our city attorney saw an issue. And, um, actually, this is, like I said, from my, um, when I read the agenda bill earlier, um, this, this process was started years ago. Um, and so we're just completing the process um, because there is a need.
Well, I, I understand a need, but why not bring that to the city council? Have everybody's input beforehand, before you draft an ordinance? And then try to shove that down the city council's throat?
Um. That's, that's, like I said, most of these rules are already in place. And this was just a, changing it to go from, um, into a co, into a code format. Um, the, the intent was not to add new rules that would impact the citizens. So it, it shouldn't have been this big of a deal, and I'm sorry that it is. But luckily, you've got a great city council that's doing their homework and finding these issues before they just simply vote on them.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and thank you very much.
So the system works. I don't know how else to explain that, so.
Hi, again, this is Dr. Margot McIver, 906 10th Street. I would like to know if the citizens are gonna be involved in implementing these kind of ordinances that have such a huge financial impact. I would like my say included in this. I would like to be informed about what the steps are and what's going on. How do I ensure that I am gonna be involved?
Well, you can absolutely send your, um, input to City Hall as well, if, if you wanted to spend time on it. Citizen involvement is always welcome. Um, also, I mean, we're, this is an ongoing topic. It's gonna be on the next city council agenda. Um, our, our meetings probably will, may change to Thursday nights, um, depending on what the council decides to do on the next, um, item of city business. Um, but, um, just like this meeting, um, public involvement is always, um, able to, to happen on all of these. This is how you do it.
Excuse me, are meetings held in person as well right now? I do see you guys, looks like you're attempting to be masked up.
Right, so we have just a few people here, um, in City Hall. Um, because of the limitations of, um, you know, six feet and all that, we can only have a few people here, um, which is why the governor has allowed to have, um, online public involvement for meetings like this. Um, prior, we would never have done this. It would have all been in-person only.
Well, is there a way to have everybody who is actually in the meeting attend online? Because this combination of the two, where I can't even tell who's talking, is really disruptive.
It is, and, and there, but there are some people that don't have the ability of, of, of getting online from home. And so we have allowed to have a couple of people in City Hall that have technical issues.
Okay, I can see the reasonableness of that. Um, is there gonna be more discussion on these issues then? And is there gonna be some sort of public forum for public input about those citizens of this, um, city who are gonna be affected by these things?
It would be at the next council meeting. Um, or, once again, you're always welcome to send your city council members an email, if that works, um, better for you. Just send it straight to City Hall with your suggestions, and I, I'll make sure that everyone gets it.
I'm not looking for my suggestions to be heard, but I wanna be in, included and updated on these decisions that are being made for me. Because it feels like this has been made without any homeowner involvement. And I would like to know that homeowners are gonna be involved, not just me, but everybody that's a citizen that's gonna, this is going to affect.
Right, so it would be at the council meetings. That would be the time to do that, then.
Can there be some sort of public outreach done on your end to the citizens that this affects?
Uh, I suppose, um, we could do that. We could, we could include a, a notice in the next utility bill, I suppose.
Thank you. That would be absolutely wonderful and lovely to let us know what's happening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you do that?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Any other comment on these side sewer and sewer system changes?
I wanted to make one quick comment, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
I just wanted to let, uh, Dr. Margot know that if you look in the top-left corner of the web screen, you'll see the party which is talking. I heard you state that. You get kinda confused as to who's actually talking. You look up there in that top-left corner, you can see that it says, "I am talking." So whoever is, whoever microphone is activated at the time, you should see that up there as well.
I think her issue was the folks that are in person here, because we do have two council members in City Hall next to me right now. And so she can't decipher who is speaking.
I got you, okay.
Within the same room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's get right on to that.
All right, um, I'm gonna move on to the next item of city business. Um, item number five, council to consider ordinance 2020-11. Council meeting date and time change. Um, for the last, um, council meeting, um, council wanted to change the meetings to, back to the original way they were before. Second and fourth Thursdays at 6:00 PM. And that is how the ordinance is written. Do we have any council action on that?
I'd like to, uh, I would like to approve the ordinance 2020-11, uh, changing the time and date for the city council meeting.
You have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve 2020-11, um, changing the council meeting times back to second and fourth Thursdays of each month at 6:00 PM. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Joe.
Second, and I'm a Miss Love, lady. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2020-11, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, I will get that sent to the newspaper immediately. Um, it will go into effect, the ordinance goes into effect five days after it's published. So if the paper is published Wednesday, if they can fit us in, and it's published Wednesday, we can have our next city council meeting, um, on Thursday night. If they can't fit us in on Wednesday, we'll have to have one more council meeting on Friday morning. And I'll let everyone know right away. And update the website with the, um, proper change for our next meeting.
When would that date be on Thursday night? Would that be the 20th?
Um, yeah, our next council meeting would either be, no, it would be two weeks from now. So if we can get it, if we can get it in the paper right away this next week, um, our next council meeting would be the 27th. Um, if it, if it gets delayed until the following week to be published, um, we won't be able to have our, um, we'll have to have one more morning council meeting.
Okay. Because the 20th, I think, is planning committee, isn't it?
That's correct. But that's next week, and the council meeting happens every two weeks.
Right, right, that's, okay.
All right, um, the last thing on our agenda is
ordinance 2020-12.
Um, ordinance 2020-12, uh, park board meeting, um, date change. Um, similar to the council, the park board is interested in changing their meetings from Mondays to Wednesdays. Um, at their last park board meeting, they did discuss it, and they agreed that that would work for, um, for all of them. Um, however, it does take a council, it is an ordinance. It takes council decision to allow that to happen.
Which, which, uh, Wednesday? First, second, third?
Um, no, it don't work for me.
It is, let me pull it up right here. I believe it's third, yeah. It's, it's moving from third Mondays to third Wednesdays, every month at 6:00 PM.
All right.
We have a motion from council on ordinance 2020-12?
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance 2020-12 for the park board date change.
Mr. Daly has, um, placed a motion on the floor to approve ordinance 2020-12, proving, proving the park board's, uh, meeting day change. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Joe.
Second, and I'm a Miss Love, lady. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, that's the end of city business. Public comment. We've heard a lot from the public. Is there anything else the public would like to say? Uh, we have a comment from Ms. Costello.
I'll come a little closer to the microphone. Judy Costello, 709 A Street. I would like to report that the citywide yard sale was a success. Um, top dollar amount was $700 by two different residents, 500 by one.
Wow.
And an old truck left the community, and a fifth wheel. So those are both good. Um, a second thing is, um, my mind just went blank. Uh, the garage sale? Oh. A couple months ago, maybe not even a couple months ago, maybe a month ago, a garage on C Street burned. Uh, myself and Jeff, our garbage man, have been working behind the scenes to help her. And as of next weekend, um, with help from the county, uh, garbage disposal, and Jeff, myself, Apple Electric, and anybody else, um, we will be able to clean her garage up in its entirety, uh, clear the site, and make her happy. And that's my report.
What day is that, Judy?
Um, that will be on Saturday, the 21st or 22nd. I'm, I think it's the 21st. Um, we will have heavy equipment there, so we ask that we not have a lot of children, obviously, because the operators don't have time to be watching everybody. Um, and we've got trailers coming to put all the debris in. Um, the county is paying for the disposal, which was very, very nice.
What time is that gonna be at?
Um, we're starting at 9:00.
9:00 AM, okay, that's great.
So, anyway, just wanted to report that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
More public comment? All right, hearing none. Uh, elected official comment?
I have a comment. Um, well, a comment. I'd just like to see us get that laptop computer, even if it is a couple hundred dollars more. And, um, I also, uh, understand Diane has had to take a trip out of state. I'm wondering if she should quarantine when she gets back, considering she's gonna be in another public setting, and, um, oh, that's my question. Nothing against Diane, but, um, considering being on an airplane going and coming and not knowing who she's interacted with, where her destination is, um, that concerns me, that maybe she should quarantine when she gets back.
Okay, we can work on that and, and see what the best course of action is for that.
I'm just wondering, um, she can work from home on some of this stuff, can't she?
She could. Um, but also, um, the way City Hall is arranged as well, um, I believe our clerk and deputy clerk could isolate in their, each in their own chamber, I guess, if you will. Um.
They have four walls.
They have doors and walls and glass and everything, so they could, they could stay isolated as well.
Well, I would hope so. It just is a concern, so.
Fair enough.
Okay, that's, I think that's all I have.
Any other elected official comment? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at 8:49 AM. Thank you, everybody, and have a good day.